Good evening. I'd like to call this Thursday, May 27th, meeting of the Tacoma School District Board of Directors to order. Would you please rise for the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would the General Counsel please call the roll?
Yes, we begin. President Cobb.
Here.
Vice President Von Bright.
Here.
Director Keating.
Here.
Director Scroger.
Here.
And the record will reflect that Director Leon is absent.
Thank you.
And our student representatives, Nathan Essman.
Here.
And Jasmine Pearson.
Here.
Indigo.
And for the one more.
I think.
Is that Indigo? I didn't recognize him. It's Indigo Hill.
Thank you. And one's right. Thank you. Before moving further into dropping the agenda, I want to start by saying that Tacoma Public Schools' addresses were on the traditional ancestral and historical lands of the Puyallup tribe of Indians. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the Puyallup tribe. This acknowledgement serves as a first step in honoring our nearest tribal neighbors and partners who have inhabited this region since time immemorial and to whom we give thanks for allowing us passage to their lands. We shall intentionally create inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor Indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and sociopolitical realities. Moving on to item number four, adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda?
A motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions about the agenda tonight? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the agenda say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Item number five, recognition of staff, students, and community. 5.1, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Ashley Magnum, wait, Mangum? Sorry about that. Project Manager, Kids Mental Health, Pierce County.
Good evening, everyone. Amanda Scott Thomas, Director of the Community Partnership Office. I'm here to do the Gold Star. May is Mental Health Month, so we actually have two. There should be two on your agenda. And I'll read them both. And I just want to preface my statement with, this is a new mask that my husband got off the Internet. It feels like a blanket, so if I pass out, here is the paperwork. Go on without me. Okay. Okay, so, the first community, or the Gold Star Award that we are going to do today is for Ashley Mangum, who is a partner. She, let's see how to do that. I'm going to start with the, with Dr. Lauren Ashbaugh first. Okay, so, as you know, Tacoma Public School defines partnership as a cooperative relationship between students, families, school, school district, and the greater Tacoma community. Partners are committed to supporting student academic success and success of the whole child. Partners work with and invest in the education of our children and youth whose future in turn will affect the quality of life for the entire Tacoma community. When it comes to student success, TPS recognizes that schools cannot do it alone. And in recognition of an investment in time, talent, and resources for TPS students, families, and staff, the Gold Star Community Partner Award signifies honor and thanks to a community partner who has made a difference by doing what is best for kids. First, for your consideration today, we have Dr. Laura Ashbaugh. She has been instrumental in her contribution to advance tier work for the whole child. This nomination does come from our Director of Whole Child, Laura Allen. She actually nominated both on tonight in honor of Mental Health Month. But Dr. Laura Ashbaugh is a licensed clinical psychologist with private practice in downtown Tacoma, Washington. She's a therapist, a consultant, a trainer, provides evidence-based outpatient psychotherapy for children, adolescent adults, or adolescents, adults, and families. She specializes in resilience, trauma, anxiety, depression, and risk, and teaches within these areas of expertise in educational settings. She is strength-based and collaborative in her approach. She strives to be culturally responsive, trauma-informed, and empowering. Through a grant from the City of Tacoma, Dr. Ashbaugh partnered with the Whole Child Team in Tacoma, with our counselors and social workers, to create a cognitive behavioral therapy small session lessons. These CBT lessons help balance out negative thinking and challenge common thinking traps that lead to feelings of depression and anxiety. From there, Dr. Ashbaugh has trained counselors and currently leads weekly drop-in coaching sessions and after-school counselor, for an after-school counselor group to continue to support this work. When COVID hit, Dr. Ashbaugh again gave generously of her time to help rework these lessons for a remote setting. She trained sites on using these skills at a tier-one level to help students be successful when they may feel anxiety rising around a subject area or test. Dr. Ashbaugh has also partnered with counselors to create a version of CBT small groups for staff as they have felt the impacts of this challenging year. We are truly honored to publicly acknowledge her leadership and the many ways she makes a difference for our staffs, staff and students. So our first nomination is for Dr. Ashbaugh for her work with the CBT groups for Tacoma's public school students and staff. I'm going to ask her to come and accept her award.
I'll keep this brief. I live in Tacoma. My kids go to Tacoma Public Schools. And I just, the work means so much to me. And your staff is so remarkable. I love your counselors with all my heart and just deep appreciation for the Whole Child Team and Dr. Garcia for supporting the work and Carla Santana. I'm sorry. Santorno, I apologize. I'm just so grateful that I get to do this work. It means everything to me. So thank you very much, and I hope we get to continue.
Will you shake hands?
We don't.
Can you shake hands?
We're not shaking hands.
At the time of COVID.
Thank you. You can go.
And just while you're transitioning your mask, for the record, that was 5.3 recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Dr. Laura Ashbaugh, Pacific Northwest Psychology. And so I think we're going back to item 5.1, recognition of Gold Star Community Partner Award to Ashley Mangum.
Okay, I have printed out the wrong Gold Star. Think it was lack of oxygen. Do you have, thank you so much. Appreciate you. All right, you all. Our second award, again, I gave you the background already for why we do these awards. And in honor of Mental Health Month, we are honoring a second recipient. Ashley, someone I got, I have got to work with closely over this last year for the Children's Mental Health Group in Tacoma. So she's very deserving of this award. Laura did nominate her. And I want to tell you a little bit about Ashley. She is a licensed clinical social worker from Tacoma. She's worked several years both in the child welfare and pediatric mental health community. Ashley is the current project manager for Kids Mental Health, Pierce County. Ashley Mangum is a project manager for Yes Tacoma, which is a new collaborative treatment model that will provide intensive support services to TPS students and their families. Yes Tacoma, a partnership between Mary Bridge Tacoma Public Schools and Kids Mental Health, Pierce County, is a three-tiered approach which will help identify students who are at risk of interrupted learning due to behavioral risk factors. The goal is early identification and access to coordinated community services. This grant-funded service serves TPS youth who are ages 13 and up with an identified behavioral health need. All students are eligible despite insurance coverage. They don't need to have that for the services. Students with the greatest needs will be referred to the Behavior and Education Support Team, acronym BEST, which will include a clinician, a case manager, who provides brief interventions for up to 90 days. The BEST clinician will work with the student and family to identify goals to address behavioral health needs. Based on the student's goals, the BEST clinician will provide brief interventions which could include a one-on-one counseling, family sessions, and/or safety or crisis planning. Mary Bridge's mission is to partner for healing and a healthy future to help guide their role in connecting community and joining together to promote the best health possible for our children. Ashley Mangum has worked relentlessly to lift these services and works in partnership with the secondary counselors and the Whole Child Team to ensure the students receive care. So the Community Partner Office wants to recommend to the Board of Directors that they also recognize Ashley Mangum's kids and Kids of Mental Health, Pierce County, as being awarded the Gold Star for May Mental Health Month. So I'm going to ask Ashley to come on up and accept her award and have a few words. Can we give her a hand?
Thank you so much. And as Amanda mentioned, as a graduate of Tacoma Public Schools, it's both an honor and really humbling to be here before you today. I'm sure if you asked a couple of school counselors that pulled me aside in high school and checked me about my attitude and my potential that they saw in me, it's been truly an experience. And I understand the power of community and what we can do when we come together to support our kids and our families because they truly are all of our kids and families. So on behalf of Kids Mental Health, Pierce County, I'm more than humbled to accept this award. I am truly appreciative of Amanda and Laura for their community partnerships of really just being supportive and allowing us to do this new program that we haven't seen anywhere in our state. So I'm excited about the program. I'm excited about the outcomes. And thank you for taking a chance on us and our kids. So thank you again.
That is all for the awards. Thank you.
Thank you.
One quick thing. Sorry. I forgot to thank Laura Allen, I think, because I got nervous. And I'm just so sorry because she is remarkable, and I could not do this without her. She's brave and kind and so smart and so dedicated. And I just wanted to say thank you. So apologies, I got nervous.
No need to apologize for that. Thank you.
We all get nervous. I have to walk up there in five minutes. I'm sitting up here, and I'm already sweating about going over there. Okay, item number 5.2, recognition of eight Tacoma high schools for earning national academic recognition from U.S. News and World Report.
Good evening, President Cobb, Vice President Von Bright, the Board, Superintendent Santorno, Deputy Garcia. It's wonderful to be with you this evening. I'm Doug Hoster. I'm the Executive Director of Secondary Education. And it's wonderful to be here to celebrate this with you. Eight Tacoma high schools earned national academic recognition from U.S. News and World Reports. U.S. News and World Report considers how all students and disadvantaged students perform against the state averages, whether graduation rates meet or exceed the national standard, and participation and performance and advanced placement in IB exams. Based on the U.S. News and World Report formula, eight Tacoma schools won honors in state rankings. Starting from the highest, I'll read them in order. The Science Math Institute, or SAMI, Stadium High School, Lincoln High School, Boss High School, Wilson High School, Mount Tahoma High School, Oakland High School, and the School of the Arts, as we know it, SODA. You'll notice there's only one 912 high school not represented that's idea. It's because they didn't qualify because they had their first graduating class last year. So it's a fantastic award. And here to accept the award with me are the principal or principal representatives from each school. First, we have Shannon Marshall, Principal at Stadium High School; Lysander Ness, Principal at Boss High School; Andrea Pham, Assistant Principal at Mount Tahoma High School; John Jones, Principal at Oakland High School; Bernadette Ray, Principal of Wilson High School; and Sunishi, representing SAMI; and Kristin Tinder, representing SODA. So I'd like to give them a well round of applause. And Lysander Ness drew the short straw, and she's going to say a few words on behalf of the group.
So I want to thank the Board on behalf of all of the high school principals here tonight. We would not be in this position and recognition without your support. We need to really recognize that TPS does the most to take care of their students. In other districts, kids have to pay for their tests, and it's inequitable because it becomes an issue of whether or not students can afford the pricey tests. And Tacoma has taken the position to really ensure that all students are taken care of for all their AP and IB tests as well as the SAT testing and the PSAT testing. And that really allows our students to excel and allows our schools to do extremely well in recognition of these opportunities. And so without further ado, again, I want to thank the Board, Superintendent Santorno, and Deputy Superintendent Joshua Garcia. Again, we wouldn't be in this position without your support and care for all of our students here in Tacoma. Thank you.
I just feel like I have to say, this is all about you and your teams too. So I feel it's kind of strange for you to thank us. We know that it's a team effort. But we really want to congratulate you all for all the hard work and all the accomplishments that you and your staff team and the students too are doing to get to this recognition. So thank you. Item number 5.4, recognition of student school board representatives for the 2020-2021 school year.
The Superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors recognize the student representatives who have served on the Board this year. Jasmine Pearson, Senior at SAMI; Nathan Essman, Senior at Wilson; along with alternates Caitlin Yee, Junior at Stadium; and Indigo Hill, Senior at Wilson.
Okay. You know, by, just by way of background, each year, two high school students are chosen as student representatives to the Tacoma Public Schools Board of Directors. Additionally, two alternative representatives are also chosen, and the alternates may serve as representatives the following year. They've not already graduated or wish to discontinue as representatives. So that's the background on this. But the background doesn't do any justice to talk about these students. So this year, I think collectively as a Board, we feel that we've just been given a gift of your time and the opportunity to get to know all of you. Just your consistency throughout this difficult year has been really impressive for all of us. And I think throughout the year, as we talked one-on-one about upcoming meetings, we just really came to rely on and expect that you'd be here. So we'd say to each other, and then we can ask the students what they think about this. So we really have the value of the time that you've given to us. Each of you is all impressive in your own way. So I'm not going to talk about each of you because then it gets competitive. But each of you is impressive in your own way. And I think that your willingness to share your opinions, to give us feedback, to offer recommendations has really modeled for us why it's so important that we seek out and make space to hear from students and to hear your voice. We appreciate the fact that you all came prepared to give us that input, that you reached out to your colleague, or not colleagues, to your peers in school to figure out what was working, what wasn't working, and to carry that back to us. And we really, again, value all the insight that you've provided throughout the year because it mattered. For those of you who are seniors, we're just so excited for your next steps and really proud of the work that you've done to get to where you're going. And we just want you to know that you have a whole community that's still here looking for updates from you and excited to see what you do wherever you go and hoping that you'll bring some of the talent that you continue to develop back home and share that with the community here. And for Caitlin, we're just super excited for the opportunity to keep working with you next year, hoping that you choose to stay with us next year. And I look forward to your leadership among a new group of student representatives. So we have a couple of slides that will show each student as we call their names. But we also have some plaques that we want to give to each of you and to really use this as a token of our appreciation for all that you've done this year. So first, Jasmine Pearson. I think we have a photo of Jasmine. I don't know how to click. So let me click for me. There's Jasmine. Thank you, Jasmine. Then next, Nathan Essman. And Caitlin Yee. And Indigo Hill. And then I don't know if I should invite, if any of you want to say anything. Or I know we got to hear from you at our last meeting, but you're welcome to give a few words if you're just ready to say something. And as I make my way back up, I'll invite other Board members to share a few comments, but I know they have to. Any of you want to speak? No pressure.
All right, yeah, so I'll speak for the group, I guess. I just want to say thank you for allowing us this opportunity and just getting that student voice up in here. And I think that's the most important part for me and I'm sure for the others too, just being able to see how we can have an impact on that. And this has been a really great experience. Looking forward for any other, you know, Boards or groups that we become a part of, I think we've all gained valuable experience. So thank you for selecting us and allowing us this opportunity.
So I think to all of you, I just want to, again, say thank you. But see how impressed I am with all of you and the maturity and the commitment with which you approach this responsibility. And I loved, at the very beginning, we had, we were talking about mental health issues. And I love that you each went out and interviewed your peers and asked them about some of these things and brought them back in a very thoughtful way. And I thought, well, that was preparation. So fabulous. But then also to watch you during the meeting, listening to the debate, listening to the discussion, and then when called on, with such grace and style, you each spoke up your truth to us. And sometimes it wasn't necessarily what we thought we wanted to hear, but it was the truth, and we needed to hear it, and it influenced our work. So I hope that you can take that forward with you, knowing into the future that you are powerful, each and every one of you, and you are appreciated. So thank you for everything you've done. And good luck in the future.
I would just add that I hope, isn't lost on you, how each of you really contributed to some really challenging and complex decisions and conversations and issues. And I found your input to be, to help guide me. And I just, I think, I hope that you are really proud that the decisions that we've been able to make throughout, particularly when schools shut down and then when we had actually the great benefit of having all four of you with us. We've really missed not having all four of you since we've been back in person. But you sincerely contributed to our ability to make really challenging and equitable decisions on behalf of students. And I hope that you take a sense of pride and ownership in that contribution.
Yeah, anytime, we, and I wish y'all could see me smiling. I'm extremely proud of all four of you for the level of work that you put in. But anytime you're doing something in a pandemic outside of what you already have to do, it's like being a student, it takes, it takes some extra work up out of you. So I really appreciate the stance you all took on the nothing about us, without us, right? You got, every time we were having a conversation about something that directly related to students, you went back to the students. You served as a liaison between students and the Board. We got to hear a true and honest voice. And I just appreciate that because this is, again, you know, my first time on the Board, but you guys made it fun to be here. Like, all students are in here on Zoom, or well, Teams. They're in here in person. So just know, we greatly appreciate your time and your efforts, proud of all that you're going to do, and look forward to reading about y'all in the news being superstars. Thank you.
Okay, one last story. As you all talk, I just really want to, time is past, so you forget the individual moments. But in particular for me, to Director Keating's point about difficult decisions this year, one of the most difficult from like in a human standpoint decisions that I think we had to make this year was to accept the recommendation from the Superintendent to rename Wilson. As individual members of the Board, we received lots of email that was very negative, called in to question our motives, and was just not always rooted in openness to change. And so when you get that many points of feedback from members in the community, it can cause you to question whether or not you're making the right decision. So I will just tell you all, hearing from you on that night gave me the confidence to move forward with what I thought was the right decision. Now I'm getting all emotional. And that's the same way I felt that night. Seeing each of you pop on that camera, ready to speak because you knew you had something to say, was like absolutely one of the highest points of my time on this Board. So just want to thank you all for your input and for being here. And I appreciate you. Okay. We will move on to item number six, Superintendent's Report. 6.1, Head Start Policy Council Update.
So I think Michelle Val Lewis is here with, I think we have a member of the Council that's going to give us our report. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Michelle Val Lewis, and I am the Assistant Director for Early Learning. And I have the great pleasure to introduce Kelly White. She is our Policy Council Board Chair. And she's going to give you an update, an annual review of Head Start programming.
Hello, good evening. It is very exciting and also very terrifying to see you all here in this room. But I am very excited to be here. So first, I'd like to thank the Board and Head Start for the opportunity to speak tonight. I have been so fortunate to have been able to come and speak several times as Chairperson for Policy Council and as a parent representative for our Head Start community. Sadly, this will be my last time speaking with you as our family is relocating next school year to Alaska. And so I just wanted to take this opportunity, you know, as we're coming to the end of this year, to share how much the Head Start program has impacted my family and myself. My son started his journey with Head Start two years ago with an IEP. And today, he is a confident five-year-old who is truly ready for kindergarten. Without the resources and support the program has given us, we would not have been able to give him the same start. The teaching team at Geiger-Monasori, Ms. Marta, Ms. Miriam, Ms. Victoria, and Ms. Mahoney, through their care, empathy, and consistency, gave me the confidence to trust myself as a parent and provide the same consistency at home. With both my husband and I working full-time, this was a challenge, but we were given the tools to make it work for our family. Our advocate, Valentina, has become a close family friend who has been with us through every step to ensure our home and family had everything we needed to provide a safe, happy, and stress-free environment for all of us, but especially for our children to enjoy learning at home and at school. The Head Start program is like a well-oiled machine with all the parts working together to create the ultimate learning environment for our children. And we, my family, we're a product of that synchronized communication and hard work. And I realized that I could give back to this great program by volunteering my time to Policy Council. And through Policy Council, I learned so much about early childhood education, how to be an advocate to champion for our early learners, and how to connect with other parents, teachers, and administrators. There are so many champions for this organization. However, just to name a few, Molly McGurk, Michelle Val Lewis, and Karen Thompson have stayed close with me through this journey for the last two years. They are absolutely invaluable to this program, and I truly thank them. And when the pandemic struck, as scrappy as I thought I was, the Head Start organization was the scrappiest. Without missing a beat, they provided tablets and developed partnerships with platforms like TS Fold, Ready Rosie, Teams, Flipgrid, and the Microsoft Sway Pages to streamline and provide multiple different opportunities to share my son's progress and to continue his learning. And I was so excited to see that all of our Head Start staff was able to stay. And I was so excited to see that all of our Head Start staff was able to stay in the classroom. I would never say that I could replace the educational experience he would have gotten from being in class, but I was, again, given all the tools, resources, and pep talks needed to help support him. And to sum it all up, Head Start has touched so many families and little ones in this community and all over the country. And through this unprecedented year, I truly believe that through being challenged, we grow. And that is what we've done together, and what we will continue to do is grow. And I just want to say again, thank you so much for this opportunity to speak and to be here with you tonight.
Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
We're sad to lose you in Tacoma Public Schools, but excited for your family's transition to Alaska.
Thank you.
And really appreciate all the time and effort that you put into leading the council. Like I shared with you all before, I get the privilege of sitting in on Head Start Policy Council meetings and seeing, really too, how I think there are unexpected benefits that came out of the transition to virtual. I think it provided opportunity for lots more families and representatives to be present on meetings, just took out a little bit of that barrier of getting to the place. So, just to see your leadership in that context has been really great to see this year, too. Any questions or comments from the board?
I have one, Kelly. What would be, since you're passing the baton, so to speak, or the gavel, to the next parent, what would you, what's some words of wisdom you would give them?
I believe that the feedback that I've gotten from parents over the last two years is they see this role as being so intimidating and that it takes a certain personality to fill it, when really it needs every parent. I wish that every parent could put on their chairperson hat and get a chance to, you know, lead the Policy Council. And so, I think my advice to future parents for any position in Policy Council is to just jump, is to just jump into it. Their voices matter so much, and being a part of Policy Council, you get to be heard a little bit more, and you get to meet all of you. Getting to spend time with Andrea, I wish we could have gotten to spend more time together, but getting to spend that time and getting to hear from you gave me an opinion. And then being chairperson gave me a platform. And so, I think it's a building block, and to just not be intimidated by the title, just jump in.
Thank you. And hopefully, you're very, very proud of what you, you know, who you are and how this has helped you get there, but thank you for that wisdom.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
We will move on to item number seven, Members of the Public Wishing to Address the Board. And just note, we are still operating with our alternate protocols. School board members encourage public participation. Your several inputs appreciated. Board members will not respond to your comments during the meeting. The superintendent or her designee will follow up with you after the meeting if action is needed. Instead of speaking at a meeting, you may also send an email to theboard@dakota.k12.wal.us. So, we have two options for members of the community to participate in public comment. One is in-person, and I think we do have some people signed up to give comments in person tonight. Just as a reminder, or for your information, you have three minutes to share your comments. You'll see a timer right in front of you, and when you have one minute left, it'll ding just to give you a one-minute warning. The second option to submit comment is to do it in writing, and we have a couple of people who have submitted comments in advance of the meeting in writing. So, if you'd like to use that option, we just ask or require that you submit it 24 hours in advance of the meeting so that we have a chance to attach it to the agenda and to distribute it to other members of the board. So, with that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Santorno to introduce the first speaker.
I'll start with the written public comments. We have two written public comments that were submitted. First one is from Robert Custer regarding pre-K children should not be wearing masks at school. The second one, by Jessie Dobson regarding music at Bernie and in the Tacoma Public School District. Spoken public comments here tonight to speak to us. Number one is we're going to hear from Anna Gitsi regarding mental health support in Tacoma Public Schools. Anna?
I'm glad the trend seems to be Mental Health Awareness Month, because that's what I'm speaking about. A few weeks ago, my church pastor gave a sermon about the importance of being open and honest about mental health struggles, especially now during the pandemic, and I took those words to heart and decided to speak here tonight. My hope is that you can learn from this and better help students when we return full-time in the fall. When I was in eighth grade, I struggled with depression and suicidal thoughts, and it got so bad that I could not go to school anymore, and I ended up missing several weeks of class. I thought that I had recovered, and I still struggled, but not nearly as much as I did before. Now, I have found myself during the pandemic in the lowest part of my life. This school year has torn me apart. It has affected every aspect of my life. I feel isolated and hopeless, and I cannot see the light at the end of the tunnel. I cry myself to sleep each night. I have had more panic attacks in the past eight months alone than I have ever had in the past five years since I had been diagnosed with anxiety. I cry to my mom about school at least three times a week. Last semester, I failed English, and that is not a normal thing for me. Now, I feel like a disappointment. I feel like I disappointed myself, and I feel like I disappointed my family. I have a little voice in my head that keeps telling me that I'm a failure. I get a rush of anxiety every time I hear the word "college" because all I can think about is that failing grade and the 1.56 GPA that I got last semester. This has truly been a traumatizing experience for me. I'm not asking for your pity, I am asking for your action. I want more mental health resources for kids in Tacoma. I want more resources for kids who are off track for graduation, and I want every action that you take to be done out of compassion and not convenient. Telling you this because when we go back to school in the fall, I want you to be prepared for students who are going to be coming off of this trauma, and I think they'll need a lot of extra help. So, the best thing you can do is be prepared. Thank you.
Next is Steve Johnson regarding impact of physical education at the elementary level. Mr. Johnson will be followed by Carrie Madden.
Well, good evening, Board Members, Superintendent Santorno, and Deputy Superintendent Garcia. I'd like to share some research and data on how physical education positively impacts children. The United States Public Health Service estimates that 20% of school-aged children have a diagnosable mental health disorder. Tacoma schools are addressing this health issue by the implementation of the Whole Child Initiative. The research has shown that physical activity reduces symptoms of depression and anxiety and may help in the prevention or onset of these conditions. Physical activity has been shown to reduce emotional barriers, improve general well-being, life satisfaction, and quality of life. It has also been shown to increase self-esteem and self-worth. 11% of the children from four to 17 years of age have ADHD. Medications are used to temper ADHD by increasing the neurotransmitter levels to reduce impulsivity, hyperactivity, and improve intention. The research shows that physical activity accomplishes the same thing, in addition, enhancing performance of the executive function task with no accompanying side effects. In regards to the impact of physical activity on the brain in academics, there's both physiological and functional data. The physiological changes that take place due to exercise are increases in gray matter found in the frontal and hippocampal regions of the brain, increase in a substance called brain-derived neurotrophic factor, which helps the brain develop new connections, repairs failing brain cells, and protects healthy brain cells. Think of it as the fertilizer you put on your lawn, basically. And then finally, increases blood flow. As a result of the functional changes due to exercise, improvements in learning, memory, attentional processes, executive processes occur. The greatest impact is in the area of mathematics and achievement when it comes to activity in academics. A meta-analysis of 59 studies published found that physical activity decidedly, has a decidedly positive impact on children's achievement, cognitive outcomes, with aerobic exercise having the greatest effect. The CDC has stated that students who are physically active tend to have better grades, improve school attendance, improves cognitive performance, and classroom behaviors. Currently in Tacoma schools, elementary students receive one hour of physical education a week, which represents about 3.7% of their total instructional time. Nationally, only 15% of physical education programs meet the requirements in 90 minutes per week. The number-one argument given by educators and administrators to not increase, or in many cases, reduce time in physical education classes, is it takes away from the important classroom instructional time. Research studies have found the exact opposite to be true. A review of large-scale studies found that academic performance is maintained or enhanced by increasing a student's level of physical activity, despite the reduction of time for the student of academic material. And then in closing, I'd just like to say that the Institute of Medicine recommends that elementary students receive 30 minutes of physical education daily, and PE should be designated as a core subject because of its immediate, long-term positive impacts on children. I want to thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Carrie Madden, please, regarding paraeducators. Followed, will be followed by Gillian Reese.
Hi, I'm Carrie Madden. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm here as a concerned paraeducator. I have proudly supported the most vulnerable Tacoma students for 14 years. Tacoma paraeducators recently took a survey about the things that concern them the most regarding their career. An astonishing 80% are concerned about the ability to maintain their hours of work from year to year. Many of these paras have dedicated 10, 20, 30-plus years to Tacoma students, and many of those supporting a population of students who need the most support while receiving some of the lowest compensation of any position in the district. And yet, their biggest concern is if they will have a position from year to year and if it will be enough to maintain health coverage. Many program paras have had schedules restored to five days a week coming up for the fall, and we are thankful for that. However, many of those hours are at less than the students are in the building. One-to-one paras are also continuing to receive cuts, even though their pay is covered through safety net IEPs. Title I is also receiving cuts because of our high percentage of qualifying Title I students. Tacoma Public Schools received emergency relief fund money from American Rescue Plan of 2021. Many of these services of Title I are provided by paraeducators, and yet many of them are receiving notice of cuts just now. With money being received specifically for these positions and so many students in need, it just doesn't make sense. Students, especially those with special needs, are not going anywhere. And after these difficult past 14 months, more students need support than ever before, and they need it every day. As unacceptable as all of this is for trained professionals who are dedicated to their career, to have to worry that their work is seen as important enough to the district that they may keep their position or may keep enough hours to maintain their health care, much less with enough compensation to provide for their own basic needs, the ones who really suffer in the end are the students. We can do better. Thank you.
Gillian Reese, as regarding the TFESP bargaining, which is the paraeducators, followed by Anitra Wise.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Gillian Reese, and I'm speaking as a concerned paraeducator. I have been working in education since I was 19 years old, and this is my second year with the Tacoma School District as a Head Start Early Learning Para. I am proud to have supported Tacoma's youngest and oftentimes most vulnerable students, and I look forward to continuing this work. Recently, our paraeducators filled out a survey regarding what needs and priorities we have. One of those needs is for our district to have an understanding and respect for the work we do. When asked if the district understands the work that we do to provide specialized services to our students, 60% of our respondents answered "not very much" or "not at all." We paraeducators fill multiple critical roles in our district, from early learning to high school. We have healthroom personnel, bilingual pairs and interpreters, and so many more. These roles are vital to providing the day-to-day support that our students need. Understanding is the bare minimum. We also ask for respect. When asked if their immediate team members respected the work they do as education support professionals, 78% of our respondents answered "yes completely" or "yes mostly." This is fantastic. But when asked if the district respects our work, the number of yeses dropped to 17%, with 53% of respondents saying "no," "not very much," or "no, not at all." It is astonishing that so many people, many of whom have worked for the district for years or even decades, feel that they are not respected. Respect is demonstrated by action. When our hours are cut or we are displaced from schools that we have supported for years, we are not being shown this respect that we need. Tacoma School District's motto is "Every Student, Every Day." We education support professionals are an embodiment of that philosophy. Despite all of the changes and all of the difficulties of the past 14 months, we have been out here supporting our most vulnerable students every single day. We ask that we are shown understanding and respect for the work we do. Thank you.
Anitra Wise regarding para-professional wages.
Hi, good evening. My name is Anitra Wise. I'm a 101 paraeducator at Stewart Middle School. I've been with the school district for 11 years, and my children are in the school district also. As you know, we took the survey, and in this survey, nearly half of the respondents are the primary financial support of their family member, and this was alarming to me. With this survey that we did, 136, which is 49%, said yes, they are the main person that support their family financially, and 51% said no. But me, as a parent, I support my family financially, and raising two children by myself, and it's hard. There, out of the 11 years that I've been with the district, three of those 11 years, I've had to work a part-time job just to make ends meet. Over one-third of our participants feel that they cannot depend on and being eligible for healthcare, dental care, et cetera, or paid family leave in the year of 2021 school year. With that being said, one out of three paras are people of color, and we can't be divided. In our model with the Tacoma schools, it's our diversity and equity. We believe that every student, staff, and community stakeholder should be treated with equitable, and our focus should is to eliminate disparities amongst all groups. Thank you.
That completes the number of speakers.
Thank you. Thank you all for your comments tonight. Item number eight, Consent Agenda. Is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
I so move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions about items on the consent agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item number nine, Policy Matters, 9.1, Second Reading of Revised Policy 2022: Electronic Resources and Internet Safety.
The General Counsel, in partnership with the Chief Information Officer, recommends the board adopt the proposed Revised Policy 2022.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt Policy 2022?
I motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any comments about this item?
I'll just offer to the board that we have launched our online public comment feature on our webpage. We did not receive any comment about this policy, and we didn't receive any other feedback from the first reading. So, this second reading represents the same changes as the first reading, and credit to Susan, who worked some magic at about 5 o'clock, and she updated the agenda again, and you'll see the red line version there that contains the changes.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
I just have one question about this policy. I think it's fine to adopt as it is, but just reflecting on the context for tablets at Head Start that we spoke about earlier. I know that kind of from a funding and like policy standpoint, there are lots of differences between the K-12 system and the early learning system, but I just wonder...
between the K-12 system and the early learning system, but I just wonder if we anticipate having additional conversation about devices in the pre-K environment, or what the ongoing need or use will be, and just how or if that will be resolved moving forward.
Yeah, I'll defer to add on what the technology plan is. I know that the policy was written for K through 12, so that aligns with our funding structure, but I know that we have been providing tablets this year to preschool.
So we have purchased iPads for special ed. We've purchased other devices other than just student and staff laptops. We work with departments when they come to us, and they have needs and a plan, and we try and figure it out the best we can.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 9.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Thank you. Item number 10, financial report. A quarterly presentation on the financial health of the district will be made during regular board meetings on a quarterly basis. Monthly financial statements can be found on the district website at www.tacomaschools.org backslash departments, and then on to business and finance.
Welcome.
Good evening. How are you? Kristin and I are here to give you a quick update. Is there a clicker, or you just move it, Bobby? We'll go to that first slide. Oh, there's a click on. So we're just going to go over a few things this evening, some current-year impacts, and then we'll talk more about our future-year budgeting, and then I've got a few ESAR updates for you. I would like to give you some highlights of what's happened with the legislature. So the legislature closed about a month ago now, and we have not had a meeting where we could bring that information back to you. This is actually an impact that's happening in the current year, in the 2021 legislative impacts. So there were three things that the legislature approved for the current budget, and those are a state stabilization, a transportation stabilization, and an ESAR equalization. And in looking at each of those areas, the state stabilization funds are an enrollment stabilization. So the state has looked at all the different implications of enrollment loss across the state and in different districts, and they made a determination that you would be eligible potentially to receive enrollment stabilization if you lost a significant amount of enrollment. Now, we actually did lose a pretty significant amount of enrollment, about 1,100 students, and that did have quite an impact on our budget this year. That's, you know, we're looking at around $15 million of impact, but we do not qualify for the state's stabilization plan. However, the state does allow us to use our ESAR funds. Those are the one-time dollars that we're receiving from the federal government. I'll talk a little bit more about it later, and that we can use some of those ESAR funds to recapture those enrollment losses. So we have an opportunity to recover some of those declines, but we're not going to be receiving state funds for it. And then there was a transportation fund we will receive. We do qualify for that. It's about $4 million, a little over $4 million, that we'll receive from the state. That is only in the current year. Next year, in the 2122 budget, the state is going to revert back to their funding formula, and it will be based on the ridership of the students that are taking the bus every day. And lastly was a state ESAR equalization fund, and that was meant to say for those districts that did not receive a large pot of ESAR dollars, that they would get at least $500 worth of support per student. We've received more than that from our ESAR allocation, and therefore we do not qualify for that. So those are the impacts for the 2021 cycle. Getting into future year, I'm going to hand it over to Kristin for a few minutes.
Thank you. Hi, as we begin to discuss the future-year budget development in the slides coming, I want to just first pause and recognize the guiding principles that you all, as a board, approved back in January for us, and just want to let you know that these are discussed and taken into consideration at all of the meetings where decisions are made for the budget. This again is probably a familiar slide to you. This represents our budgeting by priorities process, and we are in the final stages of that process. You can see up at the, about the 10 o'clock on the circle there, the superintendent and the board have, or the superintendent and her cabinet, rather, have been working very hard on reviewing all 92 proposals and going through them one by one, and talking and discussing and looking at data and making decisions around those.
Tentative.
Tentative decisions. Okay, this next slide kind of just elaborates a little bit more on the great work that has happened so far, and so you can see on the dates on the left there, those are the final, you know, 92, they worked in three different work sessions or workshops, if you will, and total of 92. And then the requests down there at the bottom, if you go all the way to the right, there were over $13 million worth of requests. We flip over to the next slide. You know, after a lot of references to those guiding principles and discussions, these are what are tentatively approved at this time. So under the green column there, you can see about $5.3 million. Categorical programs, $379,000, some ESAR stabilization funding, about 2.9, and then there were 4.4 million worth of denials.
It was much easier when we sat at the table together to hand off. So digging into the legislative impacts that are coming up for the next cycle, which is the 2122 year, these are actually implications that happen for the '21 through '23. So that's two legislative years, this coming year and then the following year. But the one thing that the legislature did that is positive for us, and it's not the one thing that they did, my apologies, but one thing that they did that was a positive for us, was the approval or the authorization of ESARs 2 and 3. So the legislature has to actually make an authorization or an allocation for, or an ability for us to access those funds. They did accomplish that during the legislative cycle, so we will be able to be applying for those resources. There are future counselor enhancements that are being added. These don't take effect until the '22, '23 school year, but we have been considering very seriously getting some of those in place now and ensuring that we have those resources on hand. Plus, it's 38 of our schools that are eligible as of today, and at a halftime counselor, that's, you know, 17 teachers or certificated staff member that would do counseling work potentially for counseling services would need to hire, and so want to try to spread that out and capture staff over a period of time. But we will receive allocations for counseling services in the '22, '23 year from this state. And then the '22 levy collection, so we do a levy collection based on the calendar year, which is off-cycle from our budget year, which spans two years. But the 2022 levy collection is set so that if we do not attend school five days a week, we have a different calculation methodology than we would if we do. And the calculation differential really comes in the fact of, if you don't do it five days a week, you can't use the 1920 enrollment. You have to use the 2021 enrollment, which was much less by 1,100 students, and we would have access to fewer dollars. So that's a little carrot that the legislature buried into the legislative language for us. We have a number of impacts internally. We're still working through all the intricacies of the budget. It's a process, and it takes time to develop and analyze and evaluate and balance individual components of that budget. These are all things that will be impacting our budget as we're working through. We're coming to the end throes of the budget. I would expect that we will be here on the 24th of June, ready to talk through details and have our initial budget hearing in advance for a July adoption. But you will notice that we'll have some revenue fluctuations. We don't expect that we'll get all 1,100 students back next year. We're hoping to get a majority of them back. We will anticipate the opening of Hunt Middle School. That's already in process. We've selected staffs for a good majority of the staffs that are going to be implemented at that school. The Tacoma Online Program, now this is a question of whether it will be considered an alternative learning experience or not. We currently operate under a continuous learning plan with the Tacoma Online, which allows us to capture full basic education funding for it. But there's a lot of rules and intricacies to what we're allowed to have that program perform, and so depending on the circumstances around the abilities for us to comply with that, we may or may not lose some funding, because an ALA program actually only gets 90% of your basic education funding. And so we're planning and trying to understand a little bit better which direction we'll be able to go, but that's an implication that we have to address. And then again, there were annual cost increases. We talked about this at the board study session that we had a couple weeks ago around, you know, we have negotiated salary increases each year, and people move up on the salary schedule and things like that. These numbers are solid and final. We know what our state impacts are in other areas of the budget. The implicit price deflator is our cost-of-living adjustment. We have to apply that cost-of-living adjustment to all of our staff. We only get funding for about 80% of our funding from the state to cover the staff that we have, and so that means that the remainder of those resources come from the levy. So some staff will receive levy funding to get that implicit price deflator, and others will receive basic ed funding for it. The SEB reduction, so SEB is our School Employees Benefit Board program, and those dollars are actually going to be, we'll have to pay less per employee for the health benefits this coming year. I don't think that means that the benefits decline, but we have to pay less on behalf. It's actually a pass-through from the state. They give us the resource, and we hand the resource right back to the SEB program for those staff that are state-funded, and we kick in a component for the levy-funded staff. Pensions have decreased, so that just means that the state seems to be better funded for their pensions, and they're able to reduce that annual pension or the per paycheck pension amount down, and we'll have a little savings there. And then material supplies and operating costs, we'll get a little bit of additional revenue for that. The elimination of hold harmless, if you'll recall when we had the levy issue a couple of years ago, that we lost a good portion of our levy due to state legislative changes, and the state provided us with a hold harmless, that actually has just now expired. So that final $300,000 of revenue that we were receiving in the current year will go away. And lastly, one of the bills that passed this year does have a financial implication. We call that an unfunded mandate, because the state didn't give us any resources to cover the cost, but they passed legislation that will have costs associated with it, and that is implementation of menstrual products for all female and gender-neutral restrooms in the district. We'll have menstrual products available within them. And so we'll work on grants for that, too, just as a side note. Lastly, I want to talk a little bit about fund balance. So we know that our fund balance plan is 5% of our reserves, or our revenues, excuse me, that we leave in reserves for emergencies. I do anticipate that we will be able to maintain the 5% reserves for the 2021 year. It will be a larger number, because ESAR will be part of our allocation. We'll have to have a larger, we'll have more revenues because of ESAR, and so we'll have a higher fund balance requirement coming into this next year. Whatever is available, whatever is available beyond the 5% reserve, we anticipate using to fund our typical activities around fund balance, like carryover and curriculum. And then in addition to that, we recognize that this was an exceptionally unusual year this year. Our revenues are down quite a bit. Our expenditures are down quite a bit. We are going to need some time to normalize those activities and normalize our enrollment, and try to find ways to keep our programming whole and get past this one year of hiccup, hopefully just this one year of hiccup. So we intend to seek your approval for utilizing our fund balance in that way. I'm going to hand it back over to Kristin.
Okay, you may have seen this slide also on prior meetings, but this really just represents the nine competing projects, if you will, that are operating in parallel for our department. And you can see through May, the green have been completed, and I personally am very excited to see a lot of blank spaces moving forward, because it's been a pretty busy, busy couple of months. But coming up in June, we are going to have some updates and webinars and hearings, or the hearing we'll talk about on June 24th, as well as some community webinars that we will start and end in July. Those still have a to-be-determined date. Thank you. This slide talks about the different budget contributors that help in developing the budget. The board, as you know, you provide guidance and help with decisions, superintendent and the cabinet team, all the budget and program managers that actually write those 92 proposals. They really have to look deep and identify the work and the goals and put it down on paper. The community outreach, you can see there the different avenues for providing information back to us. Unfortunately, this year, just due to our circumstances, we had to go through technology, and we were a little bit limited on if someone didn't have a computer or something, we didn't have an option to get that information. So in future years, we really do plan to have the Budget Advisory Committee, for example, in person rather than tech out online. And then lastly, the budget team. We're small but mighty, and we are moving toward the end here, hopefully. Coming up, we have the legislative and budget updates, as Rosalyn mentioned. The budget calculator has been released. I just looked at the data prior to the meeting. We've had about 899 people out there kind of playing around and viewing pages, and I think it was 122 submissions so far. Budget advisory committees, meetings are going. We're about halfway done. We have two, we're in two of four, and we had a great turnout. We have 36 members of the Budget Advisory Committee, and we had program directors come and discuss their programs last night, and answer questions and get feedback, and we're going to do that again one more time next week, and then we'll follow up with some summaries or the feedback that we do collect. And then finally, we have the BBP proposal review, which has happened, and those were those slides I mentioned earlier. Three big dates to look forward to. The June 24th, there's going to be a lot going on from a budget standpoint that night. As Rosalyn mentioned, the ESAR 3 grant authorization, ESAR 3 funding plan, that'll be our first budget hearing. We'll give more details in what we're planning on adopting. The budget and finance presentation will go along with that, and then we'll have a Budget Advisory Committee report out. July 6th through 10th would be the budget webinars, and then hopefully that is the plan. And then again, July 22nd is our adoption goal date for the budget hearing, a second budget hearing and the budget adoption.
Okay, I'll try to move us pretty quickly through the ESAR stuff, but I think that we're making good progress on our budget. I think that it's starting to be visible, that you can see that we're making the progress, and we're really excited to get this done. Just a reminder on ESAR. ESAR stands for the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Fund. So those are dollars that we're receiving from the federal government. They're one-time dollars. We only get them one time. Once they're spent, they're gone. It's like a grandma's check that comes in the mail for your birthday versus a paycheck, right? Once it's spent, it's gone. We're intending to use it for new needs. We have a lot of new needs that are coming up, and we want to make sure that we are utilizing those dollars effectively and getting ourselves back on track. We're excited to see students back in schools. There are a number of limitations that come with those dollars. This does not replace any of our regular funding. This is not in lieu of our levy or in lieu of any of our state dollars, and frankly, those programs and activities need to stay in place. Those are all regular, ongoing supports, and we want to keep those as they are. These ESAR dollars would come either alongside or on top of to help us move the ship forward, so to speak. As I said, it was an exciting opportunity, but we, I think one of the things I'm most excited about is some of the collaboration that we're trying to achieve here. So we've been out doing surveys. We've done a parent survey, a staff survey, and a student survey. I've got a slide that I'll give you some really interesting details from, but this is a really interesting opportunity for us to hear from our community about how that's working. We've currently gone through and identified an allocation, and I'll show you that in just a few minutes. We've achieved some feedback. We've identified a plan of how we're going to move forward. We're now going to start working to finalize. And when I say finalize, I'm going to hit to that last part of monitor. We'll have a continuous open loop. When you say finalize, it's only final in that moment. We'll continue to flex and adjust as the needs arise, or that there are changes, or, you know, the voice of community changes. Who knows what that could look like? So nothing is written in stone as it relates to these dollars. I think that it's important to understand, you'll see a couple of items on the agenda tonight. There's a couple items coming in the next meeting, and so I wanted to do just a quick dis- dispelling of what you're going to see. So, ESSER I isn't here tonight. ESSER I is already spent. We've pretty much identified everything that we plan to use those resources for. And so, when I look at ESSER II, tonight, you're going to see two items on the agenda, 12.4 and 12.5, I believe, if I had the correct agenda numbers. The one is, the 12.4 is our ESSER Plan, our Student Wellness Plan, that is required to be adopted and sent to OSPI by June 1st. The second is our approval for the grant acceptance that allows us to actually claim for ESSER II. So, once we have the allocation or the approval from you, the authorization from you, we'll be able to submit claims and receive funding for it. You'll also see tonight on a slide later, our ESSER III spending plan. It's not required. It's not final. It's not set in stone. It's us sharing out our thoughts as a cabinet team and as at the superintendent's direction. There's still time for feedback and commentary related to those allocations and expectations, and we'll continue to have conversations about that through the course of the three years that we're going to be using those resources. And then, on June 24th, as Kristin indicated, we'll have both the grant acceptance item as well as the finalized spending plan, so whatever feedback we get from now until then. So, here's where our community information comes back. So, 1,264 student responses, 2,400 parent responses, and 650 staff responses. And the periods of time that these staff, the surveys were open is maybe a week that they were open. However, the information that came back was still rather powerful. These are the top items that the individual survey respondents selected as the things that they felt were the most beneficial uses of our resources. And so, I think that many of these resonate probably with many of us even as we look at them. Reading the student survey was probably my favorite part. I think I mentioned that, too, the last time I was here, just how words are so powerful. We heard that this evening from the student that was here. They mean so much, and so hearing that back and being able to apply that and say, "We've done this. We're working on this. We like what we see. We're going to make this happen," is very exciting. And these dollars are meant to do those sorts of things. So, student commentary, what I like best about school, that my teachers communicate with me and help me achieve my goals in class. Amazing. Getting to socialize and learn about things in a fun way, being able to connect with other people. I think that this speaks to the excitement that students have about getting themselves back into a class on a regular, full-time basis, and we're excited about that, too. Parent and staff thoughts, more social, emotional training for our teaching cell and working with students who need extra emotional supports, more activities for summertime, anything that addresses equity issues as a result of COVID. I think that our plan that we are proposing will speak to just about everything that people have commented on, with maybe a small exception. This is what the anticipated draft plan looks like. So, we've developed a high-level financial plan. Now, this is broad categories that we've developed. At the very end of the survey in the appendix, there's a slide that actually details out in a little bit more specificity about the different types of things that are included in that plan, and I'll just speak to some high-level pieces here, that there's learning and acceleration and advancement. The federal government calls it learning loss, but we don't believe that that's inappropriate terminology, and so this is where we're classifying that. We are actually required to spend 20% of the grant on those activities, and so those resources are set aside for that. Whole child supports would include things like our counseling support, mental health support. We have a good amount of money outlined for that. COVID safety would be nurses, health room supports, PPE if necessary in the future, whatever those types of necessary safety improvements would look like. Systems could look like communication, working on apps where we communicate with families. The part of that is the indirects that are taken on the grant to support different components. We'll need some accounting support because we have to do accounting for every one of these activities, and it's a lot of resources to do that for. And then, infrastructure, which seems like a really big number when you hear the terminology of infrastructure, but buried within that would be $12 million of technology replacement as well as the HVAC ventilation and heating allocations that we have set aside. So, those types of activities that I think will really resonate with a number of our staff and community members. And finally, we have some allocation for unreserved because we just don't know what might come up, and we want to be able to flex and adjust as needed. So, I'll pause there. I'll pause there, and I appreciate the time. Thank you.
Thank you, Rosalyn. This is a lot of helpful information. I'm sure folks have comments, questions. I know I have a few, but I'll defer to someone else to start. Director Keating?
I, and I don't know that you would know this number, but I was curious, I have a couple of questions, but I was curious about the anticipated enrollment at Hunt. Like, just curious if there's, like, if you have an idea or if there's an idea of how many students?
Yeah, we have sixth and seventh grade only. We don't have eighth grade this year, and we're slated for 200 to open this school. And we would expect the next year with eighth grade, that would expand, and likely we will anticipate some additional ones, some additional students coming back. We usually see that with an open, a new opening.
Okay. And then, I was curious about, well, I was curious about the grants for the menstrual products and where those grants might come from.
Well, we don't know yet. We'll have to find out. But when we were, when I was listening to the legislative language or listening to the legislative hearings about this particular piece of legislation, there were a number of vendors that had provided this, provided access to these, to the products in the past and to other districts, and so I know that these things are out there. We just have to go out and seek them out.
Okay. And then, my last question, and I apologize if you've already shared this with us in the past, but I was curious about the Budget Advisory Committee. Like, who, out of the 36 people, like, who, what roles do they represent? Like, what's the representation on the committee?
Member?
Yeah.
I don't know the specifics off the top of my head, but it goes from staff members, parents, and some partners and so forth. I could get you the, we do have the specifics on that, but...
I was just curious, like, what the makeup of the committee was?
I don't think we have any students on there, do we? I didn't, it's all, here's the thing, because it's on teams, we don't always get to see their face. It's just, it's a little bit, we lose that, you know, when you're up close with the personals. So, I just see names, and I occasionally see faces through the interaction, but mostly from what they filled out on the entry form, it's staff, parents, and partners.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Director Stroger? No comments? Thank you. Director, Vice President Bonbright?
I just had a quick, I had a quick question. I noticed that we'd done the student survey and the parent survey and the, or the staff survey, but the community survey wasn't done yet. What's the timing on that, or are we not?
Oh, they're all done. We did, we did all three.
Okay, good. So, I just...
We called it parent on here.
Instead of community.
Yeah.
Thank you for clearing that up. And then, I agree. Good.
I have a couple of questions, of course. I do. On the, going back to an early slide, I think it might have been the slide for state ESSER equalization and Tacoma doesn't qualify. And just to make sure I understand it right, like, that funds weren't allocated, like, sometimes we hear based on Title I and for Title I, so it sounds like it's supposed to go into that program, but if I understand it right, it's based on the Title I allocation formula? So, some districts who don't typically get a lot of Title I funds didn't get a lot of ESSER funds because percentages-wise and how the allocation formula works, those districts typically just don't get a lot in that, using that formula.
Correct.
So, it's those districts who, based on the allocation formula, historically get fewer Title I dollars. They're being provided with a bump. Is that right?
So, is that, is the question around the ESSER stabilization or is it around the enrollment stabilization? Because there's two.
The ESSER stabilization.
Yeah, then the ESSER stabilization is exactly that. In fact, some school districts don't even qualify because they don't participate in Title I at all, so they got zero ESSER dollars.
And so, for those districts, are those included in this group?
It's only 22 school districts in the state. We have 295 school districts, so a small number really actually have qualified for those resources.
Yeah, I think maybe sometimes that's a misconception, like, it's for Title I, like, because the allocation formula is the basis for determining how much of the pot each district gets, so I just wanted to ask.
Correct.
Okay. And then, on the school allocations for counselors, the way that, is that allocation done, being done in the same way that the LAP enhancement is done? Is it going to the school level?
It...
At the school level, like, for schools that are 50% or more?
It is for the, well, it's a good question. This is, we actually discussed this today. I'm going to reach out to OSPI and verify, so I can't answer that question, but it's a good question. We asked it, too.
But, so the options on the table potentially are, if a school is 50% of students, 50% are greater free or reduced price lunch-eligible, or a district?
Right. The school qual, we qualify for funding if the school has a 50% or greater free and reduced lunch. What I don't know is, does it come to us in our general allocation, or does it have a specific, like, grant-type allocation?
And need to go to that school?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. And just related to that, I think it's easy to forget because this year has been so crazy that that enhancements for counselors was on our legislative agenda a couple of years back, and it was one of those things that got pulled last minute.
Correct.
So, it'd be great to, like, I'm not asking anybody to do this, but me, like, to go back for the last several years, even five years, to see what was on our legislative agendas and even through all this craziness, what kind of got ticked off that made me think about that. A couple more comments, just on the menstrual health products, or menstrual products, not menstrual health, menstrual products. I think it would be really great, and I'm sure you all are of this mindset, too. I always assume that you're on the same page with me. I think it's great to lean into this. Like, this, to me, is not something that is a chore to do. It's something that we should want to do for our students who need these products. But my questions are not really, well, one, about budget, does that number include, like, a need to improve dispensers or something in restrooms or wherever these are going to be? And then, two, this from an implementation standpoint? The first year, to me, it really will matter for setting the tone for budget in future years, but I'm just wondering how, and this answer can come later, but how or who will be responsible for keeping tabs on whether or not it's stocked? Because how much is used will depend on if it's restocked and that kind of thing in the first year, so I'm, we'll be curious down the road about implementation and how we monitor use and replenish so that we get a really good estimate of what it will cost on going to make sure that they're always there when students need it.
Thank you. And I would only say, if I didn't say it when I was presenting, it's important to note that the products that are in the restrooms are free to students, so they have access to utilize those products without having to, you know, put a dime in or whatever it is. And so, and they, when they were allocating the bill or when they were testifying on the bill, there's even, like, guidelines on what we think you should do to, you know, to put these on display or to have these available, and guidelines that were incorporated in their expectations around how to allocate these. So, I would expect nothing less than what you indicated.
Thank you. And then, lastly, on the survey responses, I think it was really great to see what those top responses were, and it's really great to have, like, the insight from students about what their priorities are. When parents and staff both said enhanced supports for struggling students, students are telling us these are the supports we want. So, it's nice to have all these three groups of feedback together to help fill in the gaps. So, thank you for showing and reflecting this back to us.
Thank you. And Superintendent Santoro?
I was just going to add that, you know, we've had some very good community members that have started, you know, that have done some packages for females already and that have been, you know, I know that Rotary Aid has contributed, and so we've got a good start of community partners that are ready to step in and help us with this.
That's great.
Can I just add?
Yep. Director Keating?
And, like, around the menstrual products, I think, yes, it's an unfunded mandate, and it's also an equity issue of access. And the, like, having to pay taxes on something that, like, is a bodily function is an issue of equity. So, I think, I appreciate President Cobb's comment about leaning into it, and so I just wanted to add that.
Any other comments? This was a great presentation. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Have a good night. Okay. Thank you to Kristin, too.
Oh, yes. Thanks, Kristin. I'm sorry. I didn't say that before. Thank you. Moving on to item number 11, Curriculum and Instruction. Item 11.1, Approval of the Interlocal Cooperative Agreement between Puget Sound Educational Service District for October 1, 2020 through July 30, 2022.
The superintendent recommends that the Board of Directors approve the interlocal cooperative agreement with Puget Sound Educational Service District for the period of October 1, 2020 through July 30, 2022, inclusive of the amount of $6,400 funding source Basic Education Superintendent's Office budget.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 11.1?
Thank you. A motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Superintendent Santoro, do you mind saying just a little bit about what this is? I think it's kind of interesting and unique. Do you mind saying a word?
If I can remember. I know that it is a, it's one of those rare times when we work with the ESD to, you know, provide some supplies. Josh, you're looking at the...
I got the thing right here.
Go ahead.
Superintendent Santoro is spot-on. It's working with the Puget Sound ESD to work in Pierce County as a collaborative to think about how to improve better systems for career and college awareness and guidance. And so, we, as part of a cooperative, help fund a position at the Puget Sound ESD that can lead us in effective best practices.
Thank you. I think that this is really, I pointed out, asked to say something about it because I think the part, Puget Sound ESD is located in Renton, so oftentimes you hear about things happening up in the South King County and districts up there, but I think it's neat that the Pierce County districts are going to be doing something together, especially with a specific focus on strengthening regional support for students of color and students impacted by poverty, so I just wanted to make sure to highlight that. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 11.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item 11.2, Approval of Interlocal Agreements for the 2021-2022 school year.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Executive Director of Student Services, recommends the Board of Directors authorize the superintendent to enter into interlocal agreements with various school districts as listed here on in the 2021-22 school year funding source Student Services.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 11.2?
I move that we adopt 11.2.
Is there a second? It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 11.2, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item number 12, Business Matters. 12.1, Approval of Head Start 2021-22 Continuation Grant, 10CH011090.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Assistant Superintendent of Teaching and Learning, recommends the Board of Directors approve the 2021-22 Head Start Continuation Grant application in the amount of $6,489,428 funding source Head Start.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 12.1?
I have a motion to adopt.
Is there?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 12.1, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item number 12.2, Approval of Microsoft Volume Licensing Campus Agreement, Year One of Three Year Agreement, 2021-2022.
The Deputy Superintendent, on behalf of the Chief Information Officer, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the Microsoft Volume Licensing Campus Agreement for the 21, 2021, excuse me, 2022 school year funding source Technology General Fund.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 12.2?
I move to adopt item 12.2.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting 12.2, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is adopted. Item 12.3, Approval of Washington Interscholastic Activities Association Membership Renewal and School Board Resolution.
The Assistant Superintendent of K-12 Support, on behalf of the Director of Student Life, recommends that the Board of Directors approve the renewal of the WIAA membership for the 2021-2022 school year funding source Student Life.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item number 12.3?
I have a motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions about this item? Seeing none, given that this is a resolution, will the General Counsel please call a roll?
Yes, President Cobb?
Aye.
Vice President Baumright?
Aye.
Director Keating?
Aye.
Director Stroger?
Aye.
The resolution passes 4-0.
Thank you. Item number 12.4, approval of resolution number 2096 of the Board of Directors, Tacoma School District Number 10, regarding Academic and Student Wellbeing Recovery Plan.
The General Counsel and the Chief Financial Officer recommend that the Board of Directors approve resolution number 2096 approving the academic and student well-being recovery plan in order to receive federal emergency relief funds.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 12.4?
I still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? And I'll just say that we had extensive conversation about this at our last board meeting and recognize that there's still a lot of input to synthesize and detailed plans and strategies to be putting to place that will continue to be made public and we'll continue to talk about it ongoing. But this plan helps us meet the requirement to adopt a plan by the deadline so that we can keep moving that work forward. And given that this is also a resolution, will the General Counsel please call the roll?
Yes, President Cobb?
Aye.
Vice President Baumright?
Aye.
Director Keating?
Aye.
And Director Stroger?
Aye.
The resolution passes 4-0.
Thank you. Item number 12.5, approval of acceptance of elementary and secondary schools' emergency relief 2 grant from the Office of Superintendent of Public Instruction.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the elementary and secondary school emergency relief 2 grant from the Office of the Superintendent of Public Construction in the amount of $31,521,316, an expenditure of funds in accordance with accepted guidelines, funding source Office of Superintendent of Public Construction.
Is there a motion to adopt item 12.5?
I motion to adopt.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 12.5, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is adopted. Item number 12.6, approval of acceptance of coal transition grant from Transalta Centralia Board Funding LLC.
The Chief Financial Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve acceptance of the coal transition grant from Transalta Centralia Board Funding LLC for the period of July 1, 2021 through June 30, 2022, an expenditure of funds in accordance to accepted guidelines, funding source Transalta Centralia Board Funding LLC.
Is there a motion to adopt item 12.6?
I move.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 12.6, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Item number 12.7, approval of interagency amendment number 4 and funding authorization between the Tacoma School District and Department of Enterprise Services.
Yes, this is part of the final steps in the process before the installation of the solar panels at Jason Lee. I'm sorry, last one. The Chief Operating Officer recommends the Board of Directors approve amendment number 4 to the Department of Enterprise Services interagency agreement in the amount of $364,032. Funding source capital project fund.
Any of us would have been willing to throw in that penny. Is there a motion to adopt item 12.7?
I motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments about this item? I'll just say that I didn't see it in person, but I got to see video clips of students down in Olympia talking about this project with the governor. And it feels like forever ago, it's probably two and a half years ago now because COVID brain and COVID year. But I just want to congratulate those students who got this project initiated and just thank them for their work to move it forward. All those in favor of adopting item 12.7, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is adopted. Item number 12.8, approval of bid acceptance for Falls High School facility upgrades.
The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors accept the bid for Bershwire Construction INC. for the facility upgrades at Falls High School in the amount of $1,360,800 excluding sales tax.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 12.8?
I still move.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting item 12.8, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion is adopted. Item 12.9, approval of addendum number 4 to the Parametrics Incorporated Contract for Construction Management Services on the Synthetic Fields Bundle Projects and Additional Small Capital Projects.
Parametrics is one of two external project management services we utilize in management of our capital projects, the other being Banner, which is a women-owned business. The Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve the addendum to the Parametrics INC. contract in the amount of $868,258 for the construction management services relating to Synthetic Fields Bundle Projects and additional small cap projects identified in the 2020 bond.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 12.9?
I motion to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Can you, if you don't know this right off the top of your head, that's okay. But what's the timeline for all of these projects to be completed, the field projects?
I don't have it off the top of my head. I have to get back to you. It's not going to be done over the summer, I'll tell you.
Okay, thank you. All those in favor of adopting 12.9, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Item number 12.10, approval to provide air testing services for various facilities to measure and record the ventilation air values.
Just wanted to provide an overview of this agenda item. I think it's extremely important to overstate and overemphasize that the health and safety of our staff, our students, our community is a priority for the district and board, and it will always be a priority for us. We've had numerous staff members, community partners, community members invest countless hours since the outbreak of COVID-19 to ensure the health and safety of our community. Indoor air quality is not an issue within our facilities across the district. Indoor air quality is tested by the Tacoma Pierce County Health Department across all of our facilities. Our protocol internally is if we have issues that arise or concerns, we proactively investigate those issues and concerns, and when need be, we will contact the Health Department to come back to conduct tests. The reason for the procurement of this external vendor is for them to provide us with recommendations to make improvements on our HVAC systems and our infrastructure. The end goal is to be able to provide our students and staff with, one, I would say, better air quality; two, better airflow and circulation, in addition, looking at retrofitting some of our HVAC systems to accommodate the recommendation for the use of MERV-13 filters. With that said, we did not take a one size fits all approach or one solution fits all approach. If you can imagine this, looking at our infrastructure, we have over 20-plus HVAC systems throughout the district, which obviously with the 2020 bond and 2013 bond, we're looking to streamline this process and not have so many HVAC systems. With that said, you know, what might be a viable improvement in one facility might not be a viable improvement in another facility based on the variations of HVAC systems across the district. I assure you that we're working to streamline this process and make this easier down the road. Also, I think it's important to note that this is going to be a multi-year project with extensive planning. This is not something that can be done over the summertime, as an example, but it's going to take extensive planning. In addition, this is going to be a multimillion-dollar investment for the district, and I believe it is going to be funded out of ESTER III bonds under infrastructure. With that said, the Chief Operating Officer recommends that the Board of Directors approve air testing services using Air Systems Engineering, INC., who will assess the HVAC systems and provide a detailed report on ventilation and recommendations of repairs and possible upgrades for the various facilities. The cost is $208,243 excluding tax. Funding source capital project bond, February 11, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a motion to adopt item 12.10?
I move to adopt.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments?
I just have a comment. I know HVAC systems were something that we heard about or have heard from the community at, in large amounts. So I think, my hope is that this will help provide some sense of safety and confidence in our staff and students and families.
And I just want to say, I appreciate you bringing up the issue of the number of different HVAC systems that we have. It's not an insignificant issue. Like if you work in your world, you know that. I remember years ago, in a work context, being, talking about deferred maintenance in another large public school district in our state, and they're old, and like we are. And they mentioned that they have, it was like over 100 different kinds of toilets because they have buildings that were built in the early 1900s that still have a few of those old toilets kicking around, but just from like trying to maintain all of that, and buy parts and bulk and all these things. So I appreciate you bringing up that nuance, and it's like not lost, that this is a way to get towards efficiency in the district, toward facilitating our ongoing operational maintenance and maintenance of these systems and of these investments that we're making with the community's resources. So thanks for thinking forward about streamlining so we can be more efficient with our resources in the future.
President Cobb, it's also important to note that technology changes. And so these are, you know, the field of HVAC changes. And so the moment that we create a new standard, the next building will have new technology. And so we all have to just recognize that, you know, there will be some differentiation in our portfolio of buildings just because the technology will change. And so as, we're very fortunate that the community continues to invest in bonds. What was the latest technology, and we all experience this, whether it's a laptop or a car, it changes. And so I think this is a great next step for us, but we also have to calibrate that it won't be the final time that we have to look at upgrades.
Yeah, of course. It's nice to not have 200 toilets. Hopefully we don't.
Toilets have been, remain pretty consistent.
And they stop still on it, just like your face wash that you love. That's all, this the world, but thank you. All those in favor of adopting item 12.10, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, the motion is adopted. Thank you. Item number 13, other business. There are no other business items tonight. Item number 14, report to the Board. 14.1, Strategic Benchmark Monitoring Report, Partnerships, Volunteers, and Organizations.
All right, Amanda Scott Thomas, Director of the Partnership Office. And I see you put me at the end of a very long meeting. You know how excited I get about my work. I'm going to keep it brief. So well played, Board of Directors. Well played. Here we go. So, oh, I have the clicker. Partnership, as you know, is one-fifth of the strategic plan of Tacoma Public Schools, and we have committed to fully engaging our parents and community and staff in the education of our children. Each year, I come before you twice a year to give you a brief monitoring report on some data points that we track annually. As you can see, our priority benchmark around volunteers, our volunteer numbers have dropped significantly from 6,004 in 2020 to 227. That again is due to school closures. So that, a drop of 5,777 volunteers is again because we were not having people in our buildings in the fall. And we did have some volunteers, but we had to stay, basically, limit public access to our school buildings because of health guidelines. And so that was what that data reflects. Each year, when we process our volunteers, you see September to May, we share with you the data from that same timeframe annually. Most of our volunteers, 50% in fact, are processed at the first part of every school year. So from September to October is our largest bulk of volunteers that get run through our system. So we did have a drop, and we hope to see that change next year. And we are assuming, I did do a data pool for information about who those 227 volunteers are. We got some information, but we had to submit another query. We know what schools they were in, but we don't know yet until we get the second data, which I'll share with you post-meeting, what those volunteers were doing. And we're assuming that some of those were our virtual volunteers that had to go through our process, and then some that entered our system in, later in the school year when athletics and some of the volunteer activities opened back up a bit. So again, key findings, there's a decrease in our volunteers due to school closures in March of 2020. The data shows that number that we spoke about, and again, the approximate, 50% of all our total annual volunteers are processed at the beginning of each year. So it'll be interesting to see what our volunteer numbers are looking like in September, this upcoming school year. And again, I suspect that they will increase, but we might not be full steam ahead depending on, you know, what the health implications are in September, but hopefully we'll be looking better. Our next steps are engaging community partners and volunteers in Tacoma together. I loved what I saw in one of the slides that our students and community want more summer activities. And while we have community partners that have databases of summer activities for students, Dr. Garcia pulls together partners this year to work around partnership. And we have a calendar that we will be publishing in June, first part of June, that will feature some summer activities that we have come together with community to organize over the summer. So these activities are extracurricular, they're out in community, some of them are online, some of them are small events. We have dance lessons in the park. Tacoma Urban Performing Arts Center is going to be offering some free dance classes, and we'll be inviting folks out to participate in those safely. We've working with some of the neighborhood councils. Hilltop Action Coalition is going to be doing some community development walks, and we'll have that on the calendar that people can participate in. APCC is going to be doing, Asian Pacific Cultural Center is going to be doing virtual language classes. And then we're going to be hosting some paint nights in the park. So we're working with Metro Parks and some of our other partners to keep a spirit of Tacoma togetherness and celebration fun and activities throughout the summer. June will be focusing on fun. July will be focusing on arts and environmental activities. And in August, we'll be looking at career and college exploration activities. And so we're working in partnership to put those things on this calendar that we'll publish and share with you in the next week or two. This year, we did continue to engage volunteers virtually. We did have volunteers participate in, again, our budget by priorities that you heard Roslyn just talk about. We had volunteers, community volunteers, participate in reviewing instructional materials. And we have initiated some listening tours. So with the transition of Carla and Josh coming in as superintendent, we are out talking to community groups about that transition, getting feedback, and listening to our community. So that has started. So that has been with community volunteers and community volunteers and community groups. So those are off to a great start. So community and volunteer engagement is still going on. The end of the summer, actually right now, we're still working on, or we're getting together, a volunteer re-engagement plan. So we're trying to get ahead of, how do we get ahead of volunteerism for this upcoming school year, working with the School Access Planning Committee, and of course, our health leadership around guidelines for engaging the public and getting people back into school buildings as reasonably and safely as we can. So I'm developing that plan this summer. The next priority benchmark that I wanted to update you on is the formal partnerships that have been established for the 2021 school year, from the beginning of the school year to May. There'll still be some partnerships that are actually in the works, you know, all throughout the summer. We don't stop working. But we have 69 formal partnerships that we have counted for this school year. And when I say partnerships, those are district-wide formal partnerships that are either MOUs or contracts. As you see, we had a big jump in '20, and usually that happens every couple of years because we have contracts and MOUs that either expire, that are multi-year. So after three years, they have to be re-upped, so that number vacillates. But you can see it's pretty comparable to the trend of about 69 partnerships. This is the pie that you all appreciated last year that lets you know where those partnerships are. Again, a partnership is a value of our entire district. And so you'll see each of the departments represented there. This pie is far less busy than it was last year. So last year, we had 19 departments represented on that, on the pie chart last year. This year, you'll see there's only 11 departments represented on the pie charts because, again, partnerships because of COVID have decreased, but we are still engaged in partnerships. Key findings, partnership data reflects new informal partnerships, as I said, 69 were on trend. The next move, summer jobs, I usually at this time of the year, give you an update of- how that's going because of COVID. It's still going on, but it's not as far ahead in its process as it usually is. So the goal this year is to employ 75 to 150 students. They continue to utilize local businesses, and they're doing, this year, they've incorporated independent community service projects because, you know, some of the building businesses are closed, and partners are returning from last year, and they're currently recruiting new partners. So I have updated data after that program takes place, but it's still happening. We're still employing students, and this year because of the pandemic, they've added that community service project. We have four extended learning opportunities that we formalized through the Partnership Office this year. Our goal each year is to establish four to six new partners, and so we've been able to do that this year and establish some new partnerships. We had some virtual partnerships, Care for Students, which is a Microsoft employee tutoring program that we established, Tutoring Connections, and Enhanced Prep all provided. These are new partnerships that all provided student support virtually this year, so we were able to do that. And then we're on target for the Foundations for Future Summer Course, which is a very cool thing. It will be hopefully approved. It'll be a pass-or-fail course offered this summer that's going to offer cross-curricular, flexible, student-centered project, and performance-based learning embedded within the Tacoma community to advance the achievement of college. My esteemed colleague, Justina Johnson, the Director of Equity and Access, is leading this charge, and I'm a charter member of that group, so that's a new expanded learning opportunity that will be launched this summer with approval. So four partnerships for this year. Next steps, again, we'll continue to do the good work that we're doing in our district, focusing on partnerships and aligning them with our district goals. We'll continue development of the partner portal. We're always engaged in continuous improvements of our processes. The MOUs and contracts have to go through a process, and so we're always working to streamline that to better serve our students and our partners. We are continuing to collaborate with cross-sector community partners to support students and families. The summer activities is a great example of that. And we're continuing the work of supporting building principals in authentic family and community engagement, which is happening through the Equity Design Team. We have developed our first module. We're working on Module Number Two that gets to the how and strategies to help principals do that work. And then I wanted to talk a little bit, or just mention that we're engaging a Gates-Washington Bridge Portfolio Community of Practice, which is a project that's going to be taking place over the next 18 months, that's really going to hone in on improving some of our family engagement practices and aligning with some of the SEL practices. We're having some synergy, and we have some technical support from the, I think it's the Washington Education Association. It's a huge project. Several districts are engaged and have problems of practice, and so we're working on that together. So I'll hopefully have some exciting stuff to share with you over the next time that I'm before you in the fall of 2021.
Thank you so much.
I think the briefest I've ever been. It was great. All right, any questions?
Any questions or comments?
I have a comment about like just you and your mighty team to be able to maintain the 69 partnerships in this environment over this last school year. I just think it's highly impressive, and I know that that didn't go without considerable amount of effort. So I just commend you and your mighty team.
Thank you, thank you. And shout out to Talana Pinton, my assistant, who works in the office, and that 69 is the district. So again, it's a value of our entire district, so partnerships continue and keep going. So thank you for your support.
Thank you. Any other comments? Do you have a sense of, do you know, like the last, actually the last bullet on your list that you said you'd bring more information back about? Are there, how many other districts are involved in that? Does it span the whole state, or is it focused in the?
It spans the whole state. Josh, you know how many other districts?
Eight or nine, Carla? Eight or nine districts that were selected to participate.
Yeah, thank you. And do you know, like of those districts yet, and I know it's just getting started, it sounds like, do they have a, do you have a sense of where they are? Will you have colleagues in the sense of some districts that have been thinking about and working on and building strategy around family and community partnerships? Or are they districts who are more in the beginning stages of that work, or does it just vary?
So from what I've ascertained so far, we've only had two days of convening. People are in different places. There are different staff from each of the different districts, so sometimes on some of those groups, there are no family engagement staff represented because they're working on a different problem of practice. So what I've ascertained so far is that people are in different places when it comes to family and community engagement. I think the focus of a lot of this work is post-pandemic. What are some of the needs that have emerged, and how can we learn from each other and work together? And so again, it's really early in the process.
That sounds like a good, like, group to come together, be learning and thinking together.
Love to hear updates as that progresses.
Definitely.
Any further comments? Tanya, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
All right, we've come closer to the end of our meeting, so board reports and comments. I'll start with the student board members, if any of you have any comment tonight. Indigo?
Your last opportunity.
Just one quick comment, kind of combining different things, but I know that mental health has been like one of our main focuses this year, especially coming out of a pandemic like this. And looking at the partnerships that we recently just viewed, I think it'd be good if we could get some sort of formal or informal mental health partnership to move forward with the students, just to help them, you know, with the transition back into in-person learning, because I know that if your head and your heart's not there, it's hard to move on with your acceleration in your learning. So I think that'd be something good, if we could put something together. I don't know if we could, but that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you. Nathan?
Yeah, I'd like to echo what Indigo just said. That's a great idea, and I think a partnership with mental health would help get those resources out and address, I think, some of the maybe more lacking factors. I also don't have a whole lot to say tonight, but first, I just want to thank all the high schools for making graduation work and, you know, getting plans together, and even the proms that I know a few schools are trying to hold, just making sure everything's going safely, and just ensuring that the seniors still have those memories that are important to them for that, those years. So I'd like to thank all the high schools for that. And then also, I know a lot of people are AP testing right now, so I want to thank the AP coordinators in each school for, you know, helping students navigate through everything. In my personal experience, it's made it a lot easier to figure out what the digital app is and, you know, how all the different new AP stuff is happening. So I think making sure that students still have the opportunity to take those tests is really important. I'm glad that the coordinators were able to sort that out for us. Yeah, and also, I know recently that the plans for next year were announced with full-time learning, and I guess the spacing rules too. And I'd just like to say that I'm excited to see that happen, especially because my sister is going to be a freshman in high school next year, so she'll be experiencing that, and I'm glad that she's going to get an almost normal experience. So yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. And Jassen?
I saw like many references to college support and prep, and I just wanted to echo that real fast because it's kind of the time of year where juniors are starting to talk to seniors about advice for the college application process, and it's already a really stressful process, one that I just went through myself. But I was lucky enough that my mom is a college professor, and my brother had recently graduated from college, so I had those really great supports in my own house. I know that not everyone has that privilege, and so I just want to make sure that we're really focusing on getting those resources and supports out to students early, because I did find, and I know a lot of it is because of COVID, but some of the really helpful resources came out very late in the application process, which could make it kind of difficult. And so I just want to make sure that juniors now have those resources and that support early on in the year, just to make it easier. And then also just echoing what Nathan said about traditions for like seniors, it's been really, really great. I'm so thankful for the work that you have done for graduation. I know it's going to be really meaningful, and my school is holding a prom, but we're just watching a movie outside together and dressing up. But even then, I'm just really grateful that we're going to be able to experience it.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, moving on to board members, I'll start with Vice President Bonbright.
Okay, it's getting late, but I have just two I want to share. One of them, on Wednesday, I was very excited, thrilled actually, to participate in the thank you event for our nutrition services staff, the 200-plus individuals who have worked day in, day out to make sure that we had healthy meals for every child that wanted one and needed one during the past couple of years. It's been intense, and it just, I just have to say this number because it is so impressive, but since the beginning of the pandemic, which was, you know, in early March, they have prepared and served and delivered by about two weeks ago or mid-May, 2,681,863 meals. That's a powerfully large number, and it's a small group of 200 people that managed to keep the machinery going and getting those meals prepared, and then, of course, delivering them with our bus drivers who took them around to make sure that the kids that, and to any child who wanted a meal or needed a meal got one. And so I am incredibly grateful and want to thank them, and I know we all, you know, are very grateful for the work of the nutrition services staff, so thank you for that. And it was a fun event. It was a drive-through, so, you know, I was delivering all sorts of gifts through the windows, and it was really fun. So thank you for inviting me to be able to participate. The second thing is I will just do a very quick, as my monthly report on what's going on with JMAC, which is the Joint Municipal Action Council. As where I left you last time, we were talking about our asset mapping tool as a community with all these agencies that are working together, and it is a very, very impressive finding really of this pile of information based on some six attributes and three themes that cross-section through them, all the work that's being done by each of those entities, and I thank the superintendent, Deputy Superintendent, for being the first ones to turn it in. So ours were all in the top, which was all very exciting. And you go through, and you each one, and you see all the things we were doing, and then you'd see the next, you know, like City of Tacoma and Metro Parks, and, you know, Pierce County and Pierce Transit, and, you know, Port of Tacoma. So it was this long list of the Health Department and Pilip Tribe, and so those are the groups that are involved, and it's really exciting to see what's happening in our community. And so over the next month or so, we're going through and finding where the gaps are and trying to fill the gaps. And again, we're working towards this big summit of 60, which will now be in the fall, and when we can have the community come together and talk about how do we take this information and figure out what do we have, the energy and the resources and the capacity to innovatively move forward as a community on. So, and to remind folks, the three themes are Jedi, which is justice, equity, diversity, inclusion, Jedi is one theme. Another theme is health and safety, security. And then the third theme is community wealth building. And we, JMAC has purchased a copy of some books on community wealth building for all the sitting members of JMAC and the executives, so that we can speak with one voice and learn about this issue and be more impactful together. So, and I want to turn it over to Director Strozier, because he is an active participant now on JMAC, and just to see if you had any thoughts or things you wanted to add about that meeting or that experience, or any input on that process.
I think you hit the nail on the head. I'm still a baby in the process, but it's great to be able to see multiple municipalities come together, all working towards one common goal, and to see Tacoma schools really leading the charge, because every time there's something new, Elizabeth Callan says, "Guess who's the first ones to turn it in?" It's always John and Carla. So that's exciting. But again, everybody working towards a common goal to really chart the way forward for our city, and how we use a common language on a lot of things. It's exciting to see, so I'm looking forward to how it's going to break down.
Any additional comments?
Additional comments?
Or reporting?
Since I took the mic.
Yep.
May 31st, the last month of May, so that last day of May, which means the dawned Mental Health Month comes to an end, but that doesn't mean reaching out for mental health services comes to an end. I want to encourage our students to just stay the course, because you're getting close to graduation, getting close to the end of the school year, and just know it's okay to reach out if you need something. Don't feel like you're battling things on your own, especially as you're going to be now off teams in the summer and more time alone, or transitioning to college. I want to encourage you right now to try to find somebody that you can connect with and talk to. You're never in a battle by yourself, but just because May 31st is on its way does not mean you have to stop reaching out and seeking assistance for mental health, so.
Thank you. Director Keating?
I don't know, that felt like a mic drop. I don't know that I have anything else. I don't really have any reports at this point, so.
Thank you. And I don't have much in the way of a report tonight either, but I'll just acknowledge, like, this is our last in-person meeting before graduations all happen, so want to again preemptively congratulate all of our graduates and to echo the thanks from our students for all the members of the staff at CAB and in buildings who have been working to figure out graduation plans and to make that come together. Just thank you all for the hard work and making it happen. So, number 16, announcement of future board meetings. Thursday, June 3rd, the board will meet in executive session Thursday, 17. And I also say the subject of, can I say the subjects of those? I think I can. Yes, just for the record, the subjects of both are June 3rd and June 17th. Executive sessions will be superintendent evaluation, and on June 24th, we will meet at 6:00 PM for our regular business meeting back here at CAB. And I'll just note again, I think we brought this up, guidance around schools continues to be slightly different for all the rest of the state as we move into our, continue to move into further phases of our reopening. School masks will be continued to be required in spaces where we are gathering and in our facilities, so just hope the community will bear with us as we continue to navigate the shifting guidelines for all of us and for the special requirements related to schools. So with that, any further comments from superintendent or deputy superintendent? Anything we missed? Okay, with that, then we are adjourned.